Yeah, it's fine.
You're excused.
Well, and, uh, okay. I'll call the August 27th, 2025 Planning Permission Meeting in order. The first item, would you take the roll call?
Mr. Chairman, since we're kind of rushing to do, since we're kind of talking about attendance, we could have the free form discussion for a few minutes, giving others a chance to arrive. Just an idea.
We could, but please take the roll, Ms. Ramble.
Jade Castile. Jim Jackson.
Here.
Pete McGory.
Here.
David Miller.
Here.
Steve Pajali.
Here.
Connor Whalen. Mike Zuloff.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into the minutes, just to go back to what Mr. Zuloff had mentioned about talking about attendance, I think what I'll do for this meeting is we'll just wait until the next meeting when the, when the full commission is here so we can inform them of the change that comes with Mr. Whalen right now.
You didn't like my.
The change is that there's still a second reading in front of the city commission.
It's not lying.
Before it becomes effective.
Yeah, I realize that, but so, so Mr. Whalen, we were talking about the committees and commissions have all gone through three unexcused absences and you're out. So if you're not going to be here, all you gotta do is call the clerk, Ms. Ramble, let her know, and we'll make a motion to excuse. Okay.
To you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Miller.
I wasn't paying enough attention. Is that three in a row or three in the course of a year or?
Three in a row. This is the way it currently reads.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would.
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
I would just like to remind the board that there's been discussion about the lack of necessity of through the chairman or through you, Mr. Chairman, or that stuff. You don't have to do the through stuff. I don't know how it gets started, but it's, that's kind of over with, right?
Um, yes, the, well, it's in Roberts rules that you always speak through the chair, but the city commission chan, when we are allowed to change Roberts rules as they apply to the city of Sandusky, they change them as they apply to themselves, and we normally apply the same rules that the city commission has.
Right, but we're no longer.
That's right, no longer required to say through the chair.
Yes.
But the chair does retain the right if you appear to be out of order. See, the reason you do it through the chair is so that the chair can make a ruling as to whether you're in order or not, so the chair can still interrupt and say that's out of order.
You don't get to say anything you want just because you've covered, tried to cover yourself with through the chair.
Correct.
You don't get to address people personally because you said through the chair.
However, Mr. Hastings, it's my understanding that we don't say through you, Mr. Chairman, anymore, but we still ask for permission to speak.
Oh, yes, yeah, it still have to be recognized by the chair. The other Roberts rules still apply, um, and you only get to speak, um, you only get to speak a second time till everyone else has had a chance to speak once.
Thank you for that clarification. Moving on to the approval of the minutes from June 20, 2025, everybody had a chance to. It's been moved. It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. McGory. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any one opposed? Okay, motion passes. We will move into new business. We have a site plan review for 343 to 349 Anderson Annex. Is that you, Mr. Pass?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, an application for site plan approval was submitted by Fireland Jet Ski Rental for property it owns at 343 to 349 Anderson Annex for a change of use to a, to be a commercial marina. So, as we see on this slide, um, these are four properties, again, 343, 349 on Anderson Annex. Uh, all four properties are zoned CR, Commercial Recreation District. Principally speaking, um, this land use of marina is allowed within this zoning district. So, here are some street view photos on both sides of the screen. You can see what are floating jet docks that are, um, combinable cubes. Uh, there's a shade structure there, some seating, uh, several jet skis and one jet boat. Some more photos on the left hand, you can see the whole site looking toward the south or the beginning of Anderson Annex. And in both pictures, you can see a portable restroom as part of the proposed development, which we will get into later. So, right now, the proposed site plan is on the screen, and while it is, I'm going to read off the project description so we cover all our bases. Uh, the applicant has applied for site plan approval to operate at marina land use. The applicant was not aware of the requirement for site plan approval for changes of use per section 1149.02A, so the proposed site plan does match what is currently in place. Fireland's Jet Ski Rental proposes renting out three jet skis and one jet boat during their operating season, which runs on a reservation-only model from May 31st to August 31st, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., depending on the weather. The marina also proposes a portable restroom on adjacent private property with that owner's consent. Uh, as you can see, the portable restroom is what is outlined in blue. Uh, moving on to talking about parking, while there is land available for the three parking spaces the code would require for this land use, the applicant is requesting a waiver of the parking requirements, instead using existing public parking on four streets, which are Cove Street, Sycamore Line, Anderson Street, and Lockwood Avenue. Formalizing a parking area on Anderson Annex would result in constrained access for the other properties there. The applicant stated that the busiest they could be is if all four water crafts were rented out all day, which again is a maximum 12-hour period, for a total of 16 rentals. Staff estimates this would create a maximum of 16 vehicles using those existing on-street parking spaces during the 12-hour period, which would likely result in four or fewer vehicles needing parking at any given time in the 12-hour window. Assumptions to arrive at that last statement include that rental patrons are likely to arrive in the same vehicle, as well as that there will be gaps between parking needs, specifically created, um, from the water craft needing to be maintained or cleaned in between uses. That kind of helps limits the nature of the land use, and the operation itself limits the sheer volume of people in general that can be going to the site. Uh, the applicant also stated that every time a booking comes in, they direct the customer to a different street and around Robin style to ease pressure on those spaces. Furthermore, they stated that if they have large groups that come in all at once, the groups are asked to park in the battery park, public parking lot, and walk to the business location. And additionally, if they are able, uh, they can and have, uh, picked up the groups themselves from battery park, uh, that parking lot, uh, to limit disturbance to the neighborhood. So, staff analysis, some of this summarizes what we've gone over, and some of it is a little bit of new, um, input. One, a marina is a permitted land use on this property as we've stated. Two, per the chief building official, there are no buildings, as that is defined by the Ohio Building Code, present on this property. It is actually specifically exempted in that section he showed me, um, jet boat docks, I believe is the exact wording. So, what exactly is present here is exempted. Uh, we might look at it in lamest terms as, uh, structure, what have you, and, you know, but from the building code perspectives, there are no buildings present on this property. Because of that, as what bullet point three says, a certificate of occupancy is not required, which means there are no requirements for specific types of restrooms, um, you know, and what, what flows through there. So, where, in situations where a s, a certificate of occupancy or C of O is not required, portable restrooms for otherwise permitted open-air businesses can be allowed. We did a lot of research to make sure that this statement is accurate. I fully believe it is. Uh, we looked at not only our local city ordinances, but we looked at the Ohio Revised Code and the Federal Code of Regulations. There's, first of all, little mention of portable restroom regulations to begin with, but two, what is mentioned does not pertain to otherwise legal open-air businesses. So, we do, as the city, maintain the right, um, through the Division of Code compliance to ensure that it is kept in a sanitary condition. If you, uh, look in your packet, or I can go back to it when we get to questions, um, the, when I went by it, which was at least twice, um, since the application was submitted, there was a lock on the portable restroom, which is secured. So, that's what I wanted to say about that. I guess the only other thing would be, I, I did also talk to the Erie County Health Department. They don't have any rules prohibiting it outright. Um, sanitary conditions is stuff that they look for too, but the sanitation company is required to submit sewage disposal reports through the county health department, which gets monitored, uh, by the state health department. All right, for now, I'm going to move on to point four on the slide, uh, which is that a waiver of parking requirements is requested in favor of existing public on-street and parking lot options because, five, while the business has enough land, technically speaking, to meet the minimum number of spaces, the layout of Anderson Annex makes this very impractical. I don't know the last time anyone's driven down there, um, regardless of what is, uh, per the 1927 plat, a six-foot wide joint right-of-way. Functionally speaking, it's, I've gone down there a few times. I've gone from a nine-point turn down to a five, so I'm getting a little better, but it's narrow. Let's see, lastly, six, staff does not believe the increase in traffic will create a nuisance. However, if it is determined to be so, the property/business owner should return to the planning commission to determine an alternative arrangement. Therefore, staff does recommend approval of the site plan before us today with the following conditions. One, all applicable permits are obtained through the building department, engineering department, and any other applicable agency part of construction. And two, if the increased traffic load is determined to be problematic, the property/business owner shall return to the planning commission to formalize some other arrangement. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'll throw in a few comments, if that's okay? Thank you, sir.
Ms. Flyer.
Um, you can leave it on the recommendation, Adam, it's fine.
Okay.
But the, I just wanted to mention that, um, the pictures you see are existing conditions because they made this investment and start operating the rental business. Um, it's zoned commercial, and the owner had the assumption they'd be okay with that. It had been privately used before for people's private boats. It is allowed in the zoning, but because of the change of use, that's why we brought it forward today, was that the way to legitimize the business really is to have a site plan from planning commission, make sure they're okay with the operations, uh, and how that this traffic flow, et cetera, is working.
Thank you, Ms. Flyer. Mr. Jackson.
I have a question, just from my understanding. When you said there were no buildings involved, so if someone came down to rent a jet ski, where would they go? Does he have an office that they go to rent the jet skis?
No, um, unless you want the applicant to come up, I, I can answer the question, um, but unless you prefer that, um, they have a website that they advertise on. On the website, it says no walk-ups, so it's not like a come-in, check-in, see what you can reserve. It's all by phone or email, uh, other means besides walking up, and then it is pre-arranged, basically. They're, they're advised which.
So they go online if they want to rent the.
Correct.
Jet ski, and then they have a time that they're supposed to show up and.
Exactly. This, this is simply the dock from which they launch. It's not intended to be, you know.
Mr. Chairman.
Before we move forward, perhaps, I didn't realize you were the applicant. You can come up and.
Oh, okay. I did have a couple of questions about the application.
Well, let's, let's let the applicant fill in some of these gaps, and maybe you want a question.
All right.
If you could state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name's Tom Thomas. Um, my address physically is 4060 Drake Road, Norwalk, Ohio.
Thank you.
Yep. So, a booking company, Fair Harbor, which handles that type of stuff, all of the reservations are done on there to avoid any useless traffic coming through. So when the applicant, or, you know, when the person gets on and decides they want to rent a jet ski or a boat, it does, it basically does the credit check, background check, you know, age check, do they have an Ohio boater's license, or do they need one? Um, that way, people aren't just walking up and getting turned away. The only people that are showing up are viable, already paid, already went through the whole process and have everything they need. At that point, they're just getting a life jacket, signing their waiver, or they can sign their waiver ahead of time. They're getting instructions on how to use the equipment, and then they're taken out to the bay.
Do you check their license to make sure they say they, who they are and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. The, the Fair Harbor program does it as well. Fair Harbor's a booking platform that they have to scan that stuff in ahead of time. So, and then, you know, we have to match that up, and if they get a one-day ODNR, you know, recreational boaters permit for the day, we have to check that and give them a class so that they have paperwork for the Coast Guard, or ODNR, or Erie County sheriffs, or police, if they were to be pulled over on the water, that shows that they have, you know, taken the requirements to be allowed out there. So, yes, all of that is checked, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zuloff.
Uh, back, back to the application, um, have you heard from any adjoining property owners at all, or was, was there any notice given?
So, we are not required to give notice for site plans before this commission.
Well, I'm aware of that, I was just wondering if we.
No, we did not.
Thank you.
Uh, we did receive, uh, one, how this actually came about was, uh, a neighbor with a back porch, presumably back porch, uh, overlooking the property, um, called me to complain, called the city to complain about the portable restroom on the toilet, which is what originally prompted if there was a violation at all, and that's how, and partly why so much intense research was done of all the regulations. Not that it wouldn't have been done, but, um, that is how it originated, and there was found to be no violation in terms of the portable restroom, but that's when we thought, oh, well, you know what, we actually do need to come before the planning commission.
Is the portable restroom a requirement?
No, because there's no certificate of occupancy. It, there's no, nothing to trigger the requirement.
Okay, all right.
Just, uh.
Practical requirement.
Just a comment on my part. I, I did call a resident down that lives down Cove Street. He said, uh, once in a mile, there, there is some, a little congestion, but it really wasn't a problem. He said that most of the people he's talked to complain about the restroom, portable restroom, that they sit out on their, their boathouses on the decks, and they have to, and I didn't know if there was, uh, any consideration of maybe, uh, some sort of screening or something in front of it.
I, I never really thought about it, you know? Yeah, I mean, yeah, if, I mean, if I needed to put something up, I'm sure I could. But if, I mean, if you drive your boat out of the Cove District, that all of us do, there's four portable restrooms the whole way out of there, you know? That, and I understand if they're, they're, you know, if their residence is looking down on it, I, I definitely understand.
Sure.
You know, and I put it there so that, you know, you wouldn't have, obviously, we, you don't want people peeing in the street or doing whatever. I put it there more for my personal use of being on my boat and coming off. It's, it's not really there. It's there if, you know, customers need to change or do whatever, but, I mean, you know, I had it there last year before I had a business as well. I mean, I didn't, it wasn't really part of my business plan. Yeah, it was, it was part of, you know, just public decency, you know what I mean? Of getting off my boat, changing out of my wet clothes before I get in my, you know, vehicle, or on my seats, or anything like that. You know, my children use it, you know? I, you know, I have kids, and when they get off the boat, they're, you know, using it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGor.
Um, so you're talking about your boat. Do you have a boat adjacent to these four jet ski docks?
I u, I use the equipment that's there as well. I've, I've had it there for multiple years.
Okay.
I've owned that property for three years, the other ones, and then I, you know, I was using it as.
So it's not, not a separate dock with a separate.
No, no.
Okay.
Uh, they were, no, all of the other ones were there when I decided to open the business, when I, I went down to the owner's office and changed, you know, the name on the deeds. I put in the business name. I asked them if there was anything I needed to do. They told me no. And, you know, I asked my attorney, when I had him, my, my attorney did all the paperwork. I said, that runs my other businesses, I said, do I need to do anything else? He said, no, I think you're good. So I, I wasn't even aware that I needed to, you know, do a site plan, or I would have done it. I wanted to just, you know, spend a hundred grand and then, you know, without no one.
I was just curious, you were talking about a boat, I didn't know if you had an adjoining.
I, I use the equipment there personally as well, yes. My family uses the jet skis and the boats recreationally as well, yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, I, I'd really like to finish my questions about the application.
Well, I thought, I thought you were done.
Well, I asked, I asked a question, and then we rolled into stuff, and then you recognized someone else.
Ask your questions.
Yeah, okay, thank you. So, I wonder if we could see the aerial of.
Sure.
The area again back, yeah, okay. So, uh, there was, there was a wider, uh, zooming out.
This one?
Yeah, yeah, it's getting better. Okay, so as we can see, um, you're also going to have jet ski traffic. I mean, not a lot, but they're going to move in, they're going to move out. So has there been any consideration of the impact? You've considered, you, you, you talked about the impact on the residents there, but what about the other boaters there? It, was there any discussion, because I didn't see any in there, of the impact of the, of, of, of the boat traffic? So was there any, just yes or no?
No.
Okay. Um, so, it's my understanding, you, you're saying that there's no regulation in our code about portageons, which everyone knows are intended to be temporary normally. Uh, you know, permanent portageons, if, if, if we allow permanent portageons anywhere, we got to fix that, there's a hole in the code. Uh, they're, they're meant to be overflow, not permanent, and I think in most people's opinion. I, I hope someone agrees with that. So, um, I, are you saying that it's okay to do permanent portageons on this site?
So, a note about permanent versus temporary, I, I can't 100% answer that, but an important note is that the city uses portable restrooms itself in its public parks on a seasonal basis at least, um, which also falls within the same logical parameters as the situation of no certificate of occupancy required because no building equals no toilet, no trigger for a toilet necessity based on occupancy equals that is allowed for, like you said, normally, we see it overflow, the general field.
I'm aware of the city's doing it, but they're doing it seasonally. I'm sure these would be seasonally too.
The operation was listed as seasonal.
I'm just pointing out that what is really designed to be a temporary solution, uh, you know, is, 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 seems to be used as a permanent solution, and the fact that the city does it doesn't make it, you know, any better. So, the other, uh, question is, is, are, do we plan on delineating at least some parking? I mean, is there, staff is going to have to be here, somebody's going to have to be there to instruct them in the use of the equipment and so forth, or are we going to delineate any? Because, and what I'm seeing is it's 13 feet wide, there's like a six, is it six-foot shared easement, uh, uh.
Joint right-of-way.
Shared right-of-way, it's very, it's very narrow. So really, there's room for like, basically, a car parked parallel and a, and a car to pass. It's, 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 it's rather limited. Okay, that.
A staff parking lot was.
So, no, so we're intent, we're not intending to.
A wa, a waiver is being formally requested bec, like, like it was noted in the report, although, yes, like you mentioned, there's technically the area, functionally would be very impractical.
Okay, uh, right, which arguably is a reason not to do this, but, uh, in, in any event, uh, it's all the questions I had about the application. I will, of course, have other comments or questions about the, the, the matter at hand.
Can I answer that?
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Any other questions, Mr. Whalen? I kind of wanted to follow up, uh, with Mr. Zuloff's about the parking requirement. I don't, if, the way I'm reading this is they need 2.7 spots, and they got 2.9, so there's really not a need to waive the parking requirement for them to still be able to operate? Is that correct or incorrect?
The planning commission may waive the requirement. Uh, we believe there's enough logical reasoning to support that, which is why we recommended approval.
That was my question.
Can you restate your question?
Is it requi, they can still operate without waiving the parking requirement, correct? Because they meet the minimum?
That would be the assumption that they're going to formalize this in the parking spaces, but practically, we know they won't. So technically, they do have the land area to park the cars there.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, what was the number?
They, it's basically three spaces, so technically, they have the land that they could park three cars there.
Thank you. Which is all they need, right? You don't actually have to have marked out parking spots, you just have to have a place for them to park? I mean, I suppose that is a, a pretty rough site plan without it, but.
You could make, you can make an argument probably either way, Mr. Whalen, about what is legally implied versus explicitly stated in our, um, off-street parking section.
The practical use that Mr. Panis is mentioning is if, once you get somebody out there with the way they have the porto on there, the restroom, you wouldn't be able to pass. So if we allow them to do the portable restroom, we are creating, uh, too narrow a passing lane, and there's no turnaround at the end of this. So when you get to the end, you're getting to a boathouse, and so it, so if they have a vehicle down there, that's where you could end up in like a.
Private property.
So that actually allowing customers to drive down Anderson Annex is not really a great outcome.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Uh, I guess I'm, one more on, on the same lines. I, I kind of am a little hesitant to waive a parking requirement when there is the land there to do it. I'm also kind of in agreeance with Mr. Zuloff about the portageon. One more quick follow-up on that, though. It looks like it's on a different lot. Is that not the case? Is it your portageon on somebody else's lot? Is that?
It is, yes. I've leased all that property on that side of the road.
Gotcha.
From the owner.
That makes sense.
So that's, that's also where I park my vehicle. The other people on the other side of the annex will not let people park there. They all have no parking signs all the way down that road. They feel like they own that section, they don't want people parking there. So if anybody did park there, you couldn't go by through anyway, you know what I'm saying? There, you wouldn't even be able to pass. So I leased everything from the top all the way down from my neighbor on the other side of the road. The porta potty, I situated it to where it's in between the telephone pole and the guide wire to where it, you know, you can't drive in that location anyway.
Gotcha.
It's on the opposite side of where Ohio Edison needs to access it, if they, or whoever the power company is, I called and asked them where I could put it, and they said, put it between the guide wire and the pole. So it's, it's, that's a blocked off, non-driveable piece of land anyway, is what that is. And my personal vehicle that I work out of, or, you know, the vehicle that I bring to work, I park directly in front of that portageon to, I guess, would that be the north, the north?
North.
To the north of that. So, the, the two lots where you see the 7.5 and the one above that, I've leased that property with intentions of buying it for my neighbor. We're, um, Adam has got us the, um, lot split paperwork, and we're working on, you know, splitting that up to where I can just purchase it and own that side of it as well.
Mr. Miller, and then Mr. McGor.
When I came to this meeting, I had significant concerns about the parking. I know three different people, coincidentally enough, that have homes on Lockwood, and so it has come to my attention that there are parking issues in that neighborhood, but to my understanding, that is in part because not all those homes have off-street parking available to them. There are houses there that have no garages, no driveways, no other place to park but the street. Uh, second, um, the restroom, yeah, not that appealing in general as an aesthetic, but I'm sort of, um, take the view that if it's okay for the city to do it, it seems like holding the public to a higher standard than we hold the government doesn't seem to be like justice and fairness in my book, and that, that kind of aligns with the parking issue. If, if the house doesn't have a requirement of off-street parking, and there is no regulation about the restroom, I think I understand that as a technical matter, he could probably pursue this business, and if you want to get all, um, legalistic about it, win that argument in court if necessary, but I don't think we want to be there because this business, as I've come to understand it, is run through the use of your phone, like calling a taxi or getting a DoorDash meal. It's a new world, and part of that seems like the way to address the parking issue. You got a big party coming in, well, if there's not parking here, we'll arrange to pick you up, or a plan, and, and he said that. So, I think this. So I think this particular application offers us a unique opportunity that we don't have to just guess and speculate the what-ifs of the future because it already has a past practice of operating as a business. And that record, I think, goes a long way with me. If there haven't been complaints about parking generated from the business having operated for a year or so, I think the staff's recommendation of if there are problems, then we will deal with them, makes sense to me. That condition, uh, sort of eases my mind that we are not giving cart wash to something that will be a nuisance because we've reserved the right to go back and fix it if it becomes a problem. But I don't think that it has to be a problem. He could operate his business legally without us being sensible about, um, agreeing that a nine-point turn or getting jammed up down there. I mean, that, that's what will cause an accident or somebody to have a vehicular mishap because we didn't have the foresight to say, yeah, we understand you're gonna have to park not on Anderson Annex and someplace else. And I think that's been working, from what I understand.
Absolutely. If, if anybody that even drives down there, just to see if we're there, we just tell them you can't drive down there, you need to leave. You know, this is, um, you know, over the three years I've been there, I've, you know, become pretty friendly with most of the, the only issue is really, all the rest of those docks down on the other end are pretty much abandoned. You know, the Morrow family has theirs right there. The only people that use any of that are myself and the actual boathouses at the end. And that's where it's a problem because I believe there's 11 units there and they only have four parking spaces. So by anybody being in there, they're cutting off, you know, that end house down there. So anybody that even pulls down there, I just tell them, you know, you have to leave. If you wanna reserve, you can. If you need to call me, you can, you know. You can't, you can't, like Adam said, nine points. Any of the city people that come down there to read meters or doing anything, they pull in one way and they back out the other. There is not really turning around. And anybody that drives down there, I, you know, just politely ask them, you know, you need to back out of here. And if you need to communicate with us, you can call us, but...
But, but the point I think that we're sharing is the way your business operates, you have to have that contact and interchange with them remotely before they physically show up on-site with their flip-flops and their swim bag.
Oh, absolutely. They know, they know exactly where they're parking.
This is not any surprise that you get into a jam that you weren't expecting. You know well in advance the situation you're dealing with. And the parking is something you have to do elsewhere.
Right.
If the neighborhood complains that it's out of hand, we'll deal with it.
Right.
Mr. McGory?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to follow up on what I understood of Mr. Waylon's question or thoughts. Um, as I think this through, and particularly what he said, or what I think he said, is there's an, a, enough parking here to comply so that we don't have to waive it. Now, what I don't understand is if we didn't waive it, would it require an actual parking plan with marked out spaces? Or could it just be those three spots in front? Now, if that's all, if you don't have to do anything, it doesn't require you to use those three spaces and it doesn't prevent you from advising all customers to park on the street. So I, I'm personally a little bit in favor of making this as simple as possible if what I just said would work. Um, because then it doesn't require anybody doing anything other than the way it's been going on so far. My next thought is, or obs- I'll make as an observation. I own a house on Anderson Street. I think Ms. Rambo does too. Um, so, and I'm pretty familiar with that, that whole area. And when I was, uh, in college, um, my uncle and my dad rented that boathouse that's right at the end of, of Anderson Annex. So I, I, and I've driven down Anderson Annex, so I know how narrow it is. And, and I, I backed out the whole way too, without trying to turn around. But the point I'm getting at is in the summertime, that for whatever we wanna think about it, there is a parking problem on those streets down there. And it's, it's season- more seasonal. So, uh, Anderson and Lockwood are not wide enough and they have parking on both sides of the streets. If, if you have a car on each side of the street equal or across from each other, two cars can't pass. You have to pull in behind a parked car, hoping that there is a, an open space to pull in, you know, to let the car coming the other way go, or they have to pull over. And in the summertime, the, the boathouses that are at the end of Lockwood and Anderson and Anderson Annex, oftentimes they will have, if somebody's going out on a boat, they'll have people coming down. So there might be five or six cars to go out on somebody's boat. And they end up parking up in the street. Now, I'm not saying that, that it, that it's not doable, but if a waiver is not required, then everybody just keeps doing what they've been doing and does the best they can with finding a parking place. So that's kind of my thought. And if, if it went that way, it wouldn't preclude or prevent the applicant from doing exactly what he's doing, which is recommending that they park other than on Anderson Annex. So those, those are my thoughts.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Zuloff?
I'm trying to get my head around, you know, what, what are we really accomplishing with the site plan approval? All we're doing is disconcing, you know, in, in, in our action, you know, the validity of, of this thing. And I'm starting to think we're better off, you know, not doing a site plan approval and just, you know, ma- making sure that the applicant plays nice with the neighbors. I, I, I don't know that we're accomplishing anything. I, I, I think we should, we're better off, uh, we've been operating this far. I don't, it, it, you know, is there gonna, gonna be a complaint? I don't know. I don't know that, uh, if there are any complaints, that the site plan approval in and of itself makes the whole operation okay. Uh, I'm not, I'm, I'm wondering, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned about sending the signal that, hey, you know, we, we think wedging this operation in, in a place where there's no other commercial uses, when there are arguably better places to do it, uh, uh, I'm, 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 I'm tent to approve, not just approving, but endorsing, uh, the, the thing. And I just don't, I'd have trouble facing the, the, the other residents saying, this thing, it doesn't fit very well, we're endorsing.
Thank you, Mrs. Zuloff. So I've got a question for our experts, planners at the table. So if he would have just, uh, come to you tomorrow and wanted to operate, would there be a requirement for site plan?
My understanding of the zoning, planning and zoning code, the statement that says when there's a change of use, that commercial site plans come to planning commission. So what we have, what we're looking at is five parcels that had been operating for personal use. So those could be five different owners with five boats and a jet ski each or more, all operating personally. That's how it was before, that's my understanding. And this is a change to a commercial use. And the code asks for change of uses to be seen through site planning. So staff does residential site plan review ourselves. We bring you commercial site plans, um, which is why I think the code technically asks for this. It's also a way to formalize, something was happening. We had questions from the neighbors. We're like, well, we could bring it to site plan technically. It's a change of use, so we can have planning commission look at it, see if they have any concerns.
Chairman, could I ask a question of the...
I, I've got a follow-up question.
Okay.
As far as the, uh, the question about waiving the parking, is, is that, I mean, how, how do you view that? How, how would you interpret that?
I mean, I think we could have brought you this application and said, there's plenty, there's enough, there's enough room for the three spots that they need and called it a day, um, and asked you to approve it. That technically could got approved. I think what is practically happening and what would happen to even both of your points is that they're not gonna use that area for parking. They're, they're gonna use on-street parking, uh, because it's tough. And I think even if it was five parcels owned by five different owners with five boats, they would also all use on-street parking because it's just not really practical to park out here. So it, I think it could function as it was with private ownership and everybody would figure it out. And I think everybody will figure it out if there's commercial operation here, uh, because it's modest in size. It's not like he's got 20 boats lined up there. But because it's technically a change of use, I think planning commission approvals or review, excuse me, is appropriate.
Review and the waiver for parking?
Uh, I mean, I think that the way that Mr. Panis worded it is nice because he kinda said, we think that it's better that the customers are parking on-street and not taking the public out on Anderson Annex. And if that does become an issue, then we can bring it back. I did speak with the police chief and he doesn't get calls of, uh, concern about parking on Anderson Street. And I know that it is popular street, but I think it's a cool land use. I don't wanna get in the way of things that make our city great for parking. And you know that because I was an advocate to change the parking on Columbus Avenue, right? So, um, you'll, you'll find that that's generally my approach. Unless I think it's an issue, in which case I will make it known.
Thank you. Miss, Mr. Zuloff, one more question, Mr. Miller, and then I'm gonna call for the vote.
Okay, uh, so...
Pardon? You need a motion?
A motion?
Yeah, a motion for a vote.
Well, but, but he hasn't called for the vote, yes.
I have a call for a motion.
Uh, so, um, it's Blair. I'm trying to figure out how to make it one question. I'm, I'm worried about, you know, what happens if we don't do this, because it seems to be already happening anyway. And, you know, what, what, what happens if we do it? What happens if somebody complains about it because, you know, of some operational problem or trespassing or something? You know, if, if we, maybe I, maybe I need to be asking the law director, are we providing tacit approval and are we making it harder for somebody to complain about trespassing parking, people parking inappropriately? So anyway, uh, and, and if I could kind of tie that into what if they had an off-site office and they just shuttled their customers down there, showed them a video in an office someplace, shuttle them down there and, and put them on the boat? I, I just don't think we have the best operational plan and I think it's gonna lead to trouble. And I think if, if the residents knew about this, then you'd probably have a few people in seats tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Mr. Miller and then Mr. Panis and then we'll go.
I, I have a couple of comments. One, in response to Mr. McGory's observation about if there are cars on, say, Anderson, parked across from each other, there's really effective only one lane in between. I live on 48th Street. As a practical matter, if you have a car on both sides of the street, the same thing happens on 48th Street. And secondly, in response to Mr. Zuloff's, uh, query about whether this is really necessary or should we just ignore it, I think by having this body authorize this plan instead of just not doing anything about it, it gives us the opportunity to address a future problem because of the condition of if there's a problem, we can address it. So it gives us something, uh, that doing nothing doesn't give us. The ability to review and call this back to the table and come up with a solution that better serves the public if this turns out in fact not to be the best thing. I, I'm more inclined, uh, to view, from what I infer is Ms. Blair's, um, point of view that I, I want the city to be fun and to draw people and, and be vibrant and engaging. All this stuff about jet ski rental and permits and what if you get stopped by OD and R. Last time I rented a jet ski, I had a lot of fun and I don't remember any of that paperwork. It seems like we run the risk of being the government that stands in the way of fun. And I don't think that the public is so stupid that they can't work this out.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Did you have a comment, Mr.?
I did, but I defer to Mr. McGory wanting to speak.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'm prepared, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Well, I, I had a few comments.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, can I go before you then? Would you like that? Okay. Uh, two observations following up to some points that have been made since I last spoke. The wording for the condition number two, I'll put it up again. I drove that, I got that almost verbatim from, uh, the site plan approval that was before this board for Pipe Creek Wharf on River Avenue or River Road. And what I'm going to say next is not a negative judgment about anything, but that had much, what appeared to be much less information before this board. And that same approach with the waterfront property appeared to have been pondered and considered and approved with that same condition. Second, this property is zone commercial, commercial recreation. Every district has an intent and I kindly implore you all to think about what that may mean, uh, which kind of ties into Mr. Miller's point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I've, I've got a few comments.
Can I, I, I had trouble hearing him. Can I get a repeat on which, which site on River Ave?
I'll speak up.
That's not...
I, I, no, it's okay.
It's the echo in here.
Turn off the mic, you might hear you.
Oh, what if I was back here? Is that better? Okay, cool. Uh, I got this, the condition number two, the language from, uh, Pipe Creek, I think it's Pipe Creek Wharf on River Road.
River Ave.
Which, River Ave, thank you. Which had what appeared to be much less information and coordination before us. And that's not a negative statement.
We didn't waive parking there, correct?
No, but they had a parking lot. But the same const- the parking lot, there were perceived issues, uh, is what I read. And the approach was very similar. All of these lots on Anderson Annex or in surrounding are zone commercial recreation. That was my other comment.
So I've got a few comments. How, how long have you been operating down there?
June 1st.
So you've been operating most of this year?
Every, every day before for the summer.
And, and I don't know, have, have we had any complaints about that operation?
Just one neighborhood, like the, the portable restroom.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, did, did, did he say June 1st of this year?
That is correct. 2025, June 1st.
Okay, June 1st of this year.
Correct.
So, so I, 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 uh, do tend to agree with Mr. Miller. I, I think if, uh, there were problems or a lot of problems, we would have heard about it sooner.
Of course.
Number one. And when I had talked to the gentleman that I talked to down there, he said the parking congestion is due more to the Airbnbs down there than anything else. They bring in all these cars, so you have a lot of congestion. So I, I, I don't know if it's necessarily your operation that creates any congestion.
Of the first street.
Uh, I, my, my definition or my interpretation of that portageon, Mr. Zuloff, is that it is temporary. So I mean, a temporary portageon is a temporary portageon. It's not gonna be there all the time, if that was your objection. And, uh, I don't see where parking has been an issue yet. And there's a provision to revisit the parking if there is an issue. So that's already incorporated into this. And you said you were willing to perhaps put some screening on the restroom or something to kind of screen it if it does become an issue with the...
Yeah, I mean, if they need a cover, it, I'll cover it. But I, you know, I, I didn't think anything of it because I, I looked at the other ones that were around me at the Cove Carryout or at the, you know, at the skate park, anywhere else that I drive my boat through there. I, you know, I've seen them. I got out and looked at the one at the skate park. I looked at the one at the Cove and I was like, okay, this is what they're doing. And that's kind of what I did. I didn't, you know, think anything else about it.
The only thing I, I saw about the, uh, the parking and parking at Badly Park, that's, that's kind of a long walk. Although if you do have a bar, you can stop at and get a drink.
So, so we have groups that are coming and taking out everything that we have. I have them parked there and then pick them up so that, you know, or if they're coming in multiple cars.
Well, you've addressed that also.
Yeah, I just go over there and pick them up. Or if they say, hey, we're in a motor home, we're staying over at, you know, the, the campground, I just tell them, park there, I'll pick you up. You know what I mean?
So those are my comments. Mr. McGory, did you...
I'm prepared to make a motion. As I... As I understand it, the applicant has filed an application for site plan approval. I think with the request that the parking requirement be waived, my motion is to approve the site plan approval without waiving it. And it doesn't require him to use those parking places. He can operate the way he wants to. If it's easier to have the customers park elsewhere for one reason or another, wherever they park, that's him. That's up. So I don't think it precludes him from doing anything. And that would be my motion.
I'll second.
With the further condition that if there are further problems that...
With the conditions that are listed here.
Right.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. It's been seconded. Any discussion?
I really liked that you left the parking off, but one of the big things that I see there is what if he doubles the size of his operation? We've already waived the parking.
I'm sorry.
What if he doubles the size of his operation? We've already waived the parking. At least in this case, we aren't formally waiving it.
Yeah, yeah.
He, I agree, he's not going to park there. It's fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, so I think makes a fair point. I would love to figure out, I don't think we can, this is site plan approval, I don't think we can condition it on anything, right?
You certainly can.
That's what's listed. Excuse me.
Okay, so you are, all right, so if we can condition on it, I might, you know, be inclined to move that we include a condition that the portable restroom be screened on four sides. That way we look like advocates for the neighbors, whether we really are or not. By the way, don't get me wrong, I don't think that, I love jet skis, I think they're a lot of fun. I love the idea of having that rental option. I love the business model. I'm just a little worried about conflicts with the neighbors here. And it seems to me that screening the portage on would go a long way to respecting the neighbor's rights.
One more real quick. I'll be done. In regard to the portage on, I'm a little concerned about that. Not super, because I'm with you that it's probable, it's temporary. Putting a condition in there about screening it, to me, I think further legitimizes it.
Mr. Hastings?
We're a little out of order right now. We have a motion. It needs a second to go forward. Then there can be a discussion on the motion.
I think it's been seconded.
We're discussing it mostly.
Well, there needs to be a second.
You are proposing that.
Are you talking about Mr. Zuloff?
Mr. Zuloff made a motion and there needs to be a second of his motion.
I was fishing, I was fishing for whether I should bother making a motion to amend the motion.
Well, are you making a motion to amend?
I don't think it'll go anywhere, so unless somebody's, if I think so, I'll make the motion to amend the motion to require screening on four sides for the portage on. And I'll wait for no second.
Is there a second?
No second.
Okay. Thank you. Not, you'll go back to the original motion and if there's no other discussion, Ms. Ramble, would you call the roll, please?
Or state the motion? She state the motion. I think I heard a conflict between the motion and Connor's interpretation of it.
I don't think so. I think...
I don't think so either, but if she reads it, we'll be sure.
Go ahead.
I have a motion to approve not wavering the parking, not wavering parking, you want the parking to be required basically and to include staff conditions.
No.
No way. Please call the roll, Ms. Ramble.
Pete McGory.
Yes.
Mike Zuloff.
No.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
David Miller.
Yes.
Steve Pajali.
Yes.
Connor Whalen.
Yes.
I'll send you a proposal letter tomorrow. You go home.
Okay, thanks, guys. Have a fun rest of your meeting. Thanks, guys.
So just to summarize, it's my understanding that what just happened doesn't require any changes in operation.
That's my understanding as well.
My interpretation as well.
Okay.
Yeah, he can tell people to park where he wants.
Thank you, Tom.
Guys, have a great afternoon.
You too.
Okay, moving on to the proposed tax amendments.
Yes, sir.
Tax amendment.
That is me. All right. Let me get to my right page here. All right. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we have before the planning commission some proposed text amendments updating Planning and zoning code section 1145.17, landscape features and yard structures to allow fences and side yards of residentially zoned properties to be constructed to a height of not higher than six feet above grade. The reason this is even here is because, oh, let me state that the current code requires a maximum of four feet if in the side yard on the side of the house. The proposed amendment is for up to six. Okay, moving on. During the past six months, the reason this is here is because we've, staff has noted a surge in zoning variance applications for this exact request, building fences in the side yard up to six feet. People want the extra two feet pretty consistently. Community development department records for that variance request over the last 10 and a half years show this has been a consistently popular request and has been approved in 93% of cases, which results actually in all but two where no justification was even given to begin with. Research revealed that this request made up an average of 13% of the total BZA caseload throughout the period, reaching as high as 22% in 2016, 25% in 2021, and 29% so far in 2025. The justifications I just mentioned mostly pertain to privacy, safety, and/or containing dogs. Staff also researched 17 other cities in Ohio. Of those 17, eight of them were demographically similar to Sandusky in terms of population size, racial makeup, median household income, and geography, and were the cities of Ashtria, Chillicothe, Lorain, Mansfield, Marion, Portsmouth, Tiffin, and Zanesville. All of, eight of those cities allowed fences and side yards of residentially zoned properties to a height of six feet above grade or even greater in some instances. This was comparable to the five largest cities in our state by population of Cleveland, Cincinnati, Columbus, Dayton, and Toledo, as well as to four of our neighboring cities of Huron, Norwalk, Port Clinton, and Vermillion. All the cities that we researched maintain provisions to ensure corner lots would be treated differently, which have been maintained in our proposed text amendments, which I'll put on the board in a moment. So basically, what we provided are amendments to ensure six-foot fences are not constructed next to front porches, but to otherwise allow them in side yards. Corner lot rules are not proposed to change, neither would front yard fencing. So here is one of two. This is where really the meat and potatoes of this proposal is. As you can see in D under side and rear yards, a lot of that language is condensed, including both the side and rear yard to a height of both six feet as opposed to differentiating them. And then bullet or subsection G refers to, again, the six feet above grade maximum and is where the provision for whether it's next to porches, it can be up to four feet but not six feet, porch or other front entrance feature. So that was in your packet. Other changes were renumbering to just make sure, like, make it more logical. There's no actual text changes in the rest of this section, just to make it easier for the average person, if reading or contractor, to understand it on the first read. So therefore, staff recommends that planning commission motions to recommend approval to the city commission to adopt the proposed amendments to chapter 1145 supplemental area and height regulations, section 1145.17, landscape features and yard structures to allow the construction of fences and walls along the lines of a side yard to a height of not more than six feet in height and to a height of not more than four feet above grade if adjacent to the front porch or other front entrance feature. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Panis. Questions, Mr. Panis?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff.
Yeah, I'm all for it. I'm inclined to just say, you know, motion approved, except the very first, what's now I like to think I have a pretty good command of language and I find that really difficult to read and I find it ambiguous and for lack of a few commas, you know, could be interpreted not even be a sentence. Six feet above grade and to a height of no more than four feet above grade if adjacent to the front porch. I think the intent is if it's adjacent to a front porch or structure, then the limit's four feet. I think we attempted to do this all in one sentence when we should have needed more than one sentence for clarity. If you said but to a height of not more than four feet, that might lend some clarity and a few commas might lend some clarity or except to a height of four feet. But right now, I don't know where it came from, I'm not criticizing anybody, but I read this, you know, with fresh eyes saying this is a confusing sentence that could be actually construed to be not a sentence without some commas.
Thank you, Mr. Zuloff. Ms. Blair?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to mention that I added that and it is modeled exactly off of what the existing language is that's crossed out here that says along the lines of a rear yard to a height not more of six feet and otherwise da-da-da. So certainly wordsmith if you see fit, but it is structured, the sentence is structured the same as the existing code.
Well...
Minimal change.
And the front porch, I also...
Missing a comma then at least.
The front porch and front entrance features are described in the code otherwise around the, in the section...
1145, um, six, 15 and 16.
All right.
So those are pointing to things that are defined in.
Yeah, I don't think that the fact that the original ordinance was hard to read and had the same, possibly had the same problems, I haven't looked at it that way, is a defense. If we're going to change it, let's not miss a chance to make it clear.
Mr. Hastings, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess to satisfy Mr. Zuloff, if we change it to a height of not more than six feet above grade, unless it's adjacent to a front porch or other front entrance feature, then four feet above grade.
Saying the same thing.
Motion to recommend for the legislation, subject to that adjustable.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion?
I'm not sure what adjacent to means as far as specific. I mean, I'm trying to picture, so this four or six-foot fence, I mean, wrapped around the front door, I don't know what that means. What are we trying to prevent? Somebody could...
We're trying to maintain lines of sight while you're in your vehicle, while you're walking out of your driveway and onto the public sidewalk facilities. That's the main thing. The facade and aesthetic considerations and by extension, probably property values are definitely secondary, but secondary.
So, but, I'm just trying to understand, so is that at the edge of the yard but in towards the front, the front door is?
Oh, I think I understand better now. Up to the front building wall of the dwelling. So if you have a porch on that after, if you think you need a fence, you know, you're welcome to have one and apply for that, but it just, then it has to step down.
Not extending past the front, the front of the sidewall.
Exactly. So if you're going from, to the rear to the front of the yard, this, these text amendments would shift the checkpoint from which you were required to step down the fence height.
Okay.
Could I help answer?
Mr. Zuloff?
Okay, so, yeah, basically, it's like the front yard, starting at the porch or whatever, it goes to four feet. Law enforcement didn't like tall fences in the front. Nobody likes, public safety doesn't like it. You can't see over it for, it's just unneighborly to have a six-foot fence in the front. Used to be unneighborly to have a six-foot fence in the back, but, you know, mores have changed, you know, out west, it's unneighborly to not have a fence, you know. Midwesterners don't even like fences, at least in the old days. It's like you put up a fence, if you go to four-foot fence, it's like, why do you hate your neighbor, you know? So standards have changed. So this is really kind of updating our expectations and what people want, but it's still a matter of public safety and I think the police would agree, you know, to have, keep it down to four feet in the front.
Mr. Jack?
Yeah, I'm still confused.
Okay.
When you talk about where it drops down to four feet, is this when something goes past the front of your house?
Yes, that's the point that Mr. McGory was asking about when we were talking about adjacent to. So the way, and I think we're talking about G1 on the PowerPoint also in the packet, which is saying, it's, we're changing the point on like a site plan, but if you're looking at it and you see a fence and it's like, oh, that's next to the house. Right now, I have to flag every single one of those and either ask if they will comply with the regulation or guide them through a variance process. And the data shows almost every single time we approve it, as long as there's a justification, which some of them were for safety, trespassing reasons. Some are dogs, but a lot of it's privacy, expectations have changed. But to your original, does that help answer it? If not, just, that's fine, I can explain it different.
If I could say how I perceive his answer, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McGory?
So it's my understanding that from the front corner of a residence going towards the backyard, you could, the proposed increase or the proposal to modify is to raise it to six feet. From the front corner of the house going forward towards the street, the front yard, it's, is still four feet.
That's correct.
Three feet for the front yard.
Across the front yard, yes.
Three feet from the front yard.
Adjacent, I'm inside that line.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, cool.
The cutoff point is the front corner of the house.
Yeah, and maybe I could have explained better to that the, the front porch is considered an entrance feature and which is different from the front building wall of the, you know, the principal dwelling.
Okay, we have a motion in a second? Yes, we have a motion in a second. We can call the roll, Ms. Ramble.
Steve Pajali.
Yes.
David Miller.
Yes.
Jim Jackson.
Yes.
Mike Zuloff.
Yes.
Pete McGory.
Maybe. No, yes.
Connor Whalen.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thank you, Ms. Ramble. The next meeting is September 24th at 5:00 PM. Any additional information?
I do have some things here today. So we, we have just launched a new project we're calling the Housing Development Accelerator. I didn't call it a plan on purpose because the whole point of doing this is to get more housing built in the city. So what we have contracted with OHM Advisors and we are going to do some community engagement around three different sites. One of them is city-owned land in the Cold Creek neighborhood, so there's a bunch of land still there. The GNC Foundry Site over on West Monroe and then city-owned land around the south side. We're going to hold some community meetings for the neighbors in those areas to take a look at what kind of development, what kind of housing development they would really like to see there or not like to see there, specifically architectural styles, unit types, height, those sort of things. So we can get to a final deliverable of a drawing of a development scenario that the neighbors are really supportive of and then do an RFQ for developer to come build. So hopefully, we'll do some of that research, primarily the community engagement, also looking utility connections. The first round of meetings we're looking at doing in October, of course, we will make sure your schedule is open, Mr. Jackson, for the Cold Creek one.
Well, is everyone going to be notified of these meetings in the Cold Creek?
Yes, yes, yes.
I will definitely have them all there.
It's in your house.
I will have them all there.
We haven't like completed our public engagement plan yet, but yes, we'll make sure that people know that we want to have these meetings. We want, we want folks to come. We want to do some co-design with the residents.
Oh, that'll be...
We're also going to look at options for infill development. So where there's vacant land here and there across the city, what... what type of houses fit on already, you know, created city lots? If there were going to be somebody that was going to build a duplex or a triplex or a fourplex, what might that look like? So we'll also resort on a pattern book for infill development for residential that hopefully landowners or prospective builders could kind of take and say, okay, we'd like to build that. Let's draw a set of plans that match that because we know it'll fit within the zoning. We're also going to expect that we might find some zoning that's in our way. And so if we find any of our zoning is in our way, we might bring zoning amendments to you. We have a little bit of money from the Department of Development, particularly for zoning, if we do find zoning amendments that make sense through this project. So you'll see, I'd love to invite you all to those conversations. We're going to do one round in October and then probably another round in like February timeframe. And, yeah, I think that's a good overview of the goals and what we're doing. So happy to take any questions, but I will absolutely keep you informed of those and hope that you'll be involved in the process.
Thank you, Ms. Blair. Any questions for Ms. Blair before I get to Mr. Hastings?
Okay.
Mr. Hastings?
Yes, we still need one more vote on the proposed text amendment. Mr. Zuloff made a motion to amend it. That was seconded, and then we only had one vote after that, which I would interpret as the vote to amend the text.
No, Mr. Chairman, no, I'm sorry. I made the initial motion, and it...
It did not make a second.
And the motion was...
You have to have first a vote on the amended motion, then the text amendment. First you have to move to amend.
There was only one motion.
There was never a motion before you asked.
That's my point, we need another vote on the amended text amendment.
Did you make a motion to amend that language?
No.
I'm confused.
I remember I'm having concerns about the language, but I don't remember.
Well, then I don't understand what was passed.
My motion included the amendment.
No, that's not how you do it. You either...
We'll follow your direction.
If that was a motion to amend...
No, it wasn't a motion to amend.
All right, then the vote was on the unamended with the original language as proposed, text amendment.
Yeah, I think it was.
No, he said he wanted to use your language.
So we, I interpret that as a motion to amend the text amendment. First, we had to get consensus by everybody to amend the text amendment in case somebody wanted to keep the original language.
So we need a motion to approve that.